Yeah, then we can think of what we use for the last time they do it at. And Jim's like, taxi there. And I'm like, yeah, so just kind of nice and quiet, like, how was the last minute thing? He's like, let's just go back there. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And they sent, uh, sent me a shirt for my, this is our, my 50th year since my senior class would have played.
Oh, really?
Having a reunion, so they sent me a shirt.
Nice of them.
Yeah. Brady, Brian?
Ready.
How are you tied? All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Call?
Here.
Parliament?
Mayor Innes?
Here.
They tried that.
The agenda will include, obviously, the budget workshop, workshop session, work session, workshop. So I'll look for a, uh, motion approval of the agenda.
Second.
A motion of second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Budget work session, 2022 proposed expenses. Where did we leave off, Brian?
We ended on the police department.
All right. What page was that actually?
That would be page 19 on the packet.
Okay.
Actually, I would request that we back up a page because we were talking about, um, engineering and Tammy wasn't here.
Yeah, that's right.
And we had some questions for her.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, Tammy, you weren't here, but we were talking about whether or not you needed some help. And a few of us were thinking that you probably do with the amount of infrastructure projects that we're working on and construction needs. And, uh, I think it's pretty recognizable that you work a lot of extra hours. So, um, I don't know if you could talk a little bit to that, or I think, um, answering some of the questions that came up around the topic would be helpful too. Like, um, if there would be something for somebody to do in the winter. Because it's, I think the, uh, the summer stuff is obvious, um, but the winter stuff was maybe not quite so apparent. Um, so I don't know if you could maybe just tell us your thoughts.
Yeah, um, you know, obviously, the more projects that we do, the busier I am, especially in the summertime here. We have a lot going on, plus a lot of developments. Um, I'm pretty thankful that Ryan is working because he can kind of watch those developers and, like, he's running back and forth with the joint repair project and the repair at the railroad and kind of being my eyes on things, as well as looking at site plans and that sort of thing. Um, I, you know, Christina and I talked about interns every year, and to be honest, if we don't hire Ryan, then I don't want another intern, just because interns take a lot of time. There's a lot of training there, there's a lot of getting them up to speed, and construction season's three, four months out of the year. So when I'm the busiest, I don't really want another kid around to, like, try to take the time to train them up, to do things, to still check things over. It just doesn't work. Um, and it, it's not really fair to them either, you know? Uh, I, I've talked to mo, like, most of you about Ryan. I would love to hire Ryan. I mean, if now's the time to hire him, then he'd be perfect. Um, but if now's not the time to hire him, then maybe we start relying on, you know, other city employees to do some of that work, like Public Works. I think there was another Public Works member in the budget for that too.
What kind of things can Ryan do for you that frees you up to do other things?
Um, well, he does a lot of filing stuff for me. Um, he kind of put together all these filing cabinets, because if you've been in my office, I have a lot of paper. Um, after, like, council meetings, he does the agreements, he scans them in, he saves them to the server. Like, those little things save me a lot of time, just because it takes a couple hours. Um, you know, he's kind of my eyes. He can run out and look at sites. If somebody calls, he can return those calls and answer questions that way. He, like, the core area for trees, um, they needed to be staked out, and what type the homeowner wanted, that sort of thing. He's pretty good with residents, and I kind of let him go on that. There are a few hiccups along the way, but he learned pretty quickly to keep track of everything. Um, he does a lot of the mapping, so like, I review plaits and approve plaits, but then you still have to go into AutoCAD, you have to draw it up. Um, other city staff members use that, but nobody really knows how to use AutoCAD, so they can't really draw anything up. Um, that's maybe one thing that maybe city staff could learn how to do more of that. Um, but at the same time, that costs more with licenses too, because we only have a couple licenses that you can actually edit the map, where others are just viewers. So they can open it and look at it, but they can't do the work in it. Um, same with, like, GIS. Like, I don't, I don't have time to sit there and mess with GIS, so GIS mapping is different than the AutoCAD mapping. Um, I prefer AutoCAD, just because I can put a lot more information into it and measure things off of it, where, like, GIS you really don't. That's more of like a viewer.
Tammy, I have a quick question, though, sorry. Um, so this was brought up when you were gone. Uh, Brian made, you know, a good point, a valid point, that you don't create a position for someone, right? You, so my point, and I know we have, uh, obviously, a good candidate, it sounds like, for it. So my thing is, what do you see in this position? Like, obviously, we know we probably have a qualified candidate, but is this something that you see standing with, you know, time? Obviously, if you have somebody, like, is it like an assistant, or is it like, you know what I'm saying? Like, the work that can do, like you said, obviously, there mu, there must be a lot for them to do, um, that would make them maybe more qualified than maybe an office staff, right? Like, uh, I mean, to me, I'm just li, listening to some of that stuff, I'm thinking, that's more specific, where, like, that GIS and all that stuff, that... You know, so I'm just saying, are you thinking this would be something that you'd be able to, like, what kind of position? If we create a position, like, do we do job descriptions and stuff like that? Like, if you have to write a job description, what would it entail, or what would the title be?
So, like, the city of Harrisburg just hired a GIS coordinator, and that person does, you know, a lot of the mapping, a lot of the plat work. Um, you know, when developments come in after the construction, they're supposed to give us. They don't always do that, but we've been pushing it more that they give us the ads built, because, just because it's designed on paper one way, doesn't mean that's actually how it's built. And so there's a lot of that stuff that kind of gets done after the fact, after construction. Um, a lot of that kind of stuff is really more on the GIS coordinator. Um, they'd be more of like a planning type of person.
What would the salary range then be? Like, because obviously, it's a budget, I mean...
Uh, GIS people are pretty expensive. I would say it's more in that $20 to $25 an hour range.
Okay.
I think the big question, or at least my recollection, was, there's no question that you could use him from March 1st to November 1st. The question was, what do you do from November 1st to, you know, March 1st? What are your thoughts on that?
Um, so Ryan did work pretty late. I think he worked until the end of the year last year, but putting together a lot of the maps is kind of a big ordeal, because it takes a lot of time. And I don't want to, I don't want to spend the time to do that, because I got design standards to update and other engineering things to update that are really way more important, and they're way behind. I think the last time we updated our design standards was 2013, and our standard specifications, I'm almost to the point of just removing those, because they're completely outdated.
So Tammy, do you feel that, that you could keep him, I mean, this, this is a 12-month position that you could fill?
I think I could keep him busy all winter. I think that's in the time that I could actually sit down and spend time with him and talk about maps and where we want the mapping to go, and, you know, we've got building permits and everything that are paper copies. Um, those are things that could be scanned in, put on our server, and put in a GIS map. So there's definitely work to be done. And I'm not saying that some of those things couldn't be done by other city staff, or, you know, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Christina, Brian, that there's, I think we hired, like, a summer intern or something to scan in a lot of documents to put on our server. So, I mean, you wouldn't have to necessarily pay somebody $25 an hour to do that stuff.
Sure.
So I think there's plenty of work to be done, and somebody like Brian is pretty easy to get him to do different things, because he likes to be well-rounded and work on different items.
And is he just, I mean, again, not saying that he's a, is he just graduating from college, or has graduated from college?
Um, he graduated a couple years ago.
Okay.
Yeah. So he's kind of to the point where he needs benefits. So I don't know if that's 24 or what, but...
Sure.
I think by October, he needs benefits, so...
We've had him for two years on a full-time temporary status, is that right? So he's got two years of experience, but not the full year?
Right. He's still seasonal.
Okay.
But he's worked eight, 78 months, is that correct?
Yeah, this year.
This year?
Yep.
Um, so we've had a city engineer in Brandon for what, five years? Is that right?
Yeah.
So we did work in Brandon previous to having a city engineer, right?
Mm-hmm.
We built four times the amount of houses in the city before we had a city engineer. So then who did all this work then?
Uh, the city contracted with Stockwell engineers. So John Brown was like the city engineer, but it was Stockwell who did it.
So they did the filing, the scanning, the clerical?
Um, so I have that problem multiple times when I'm looking for past projects, is I can't find a plan set, and I have to call Stockwell to get it, and they're not always so willing to give that to me. So... That's a good question. We fight that battle multiple times. Should they own them? No, the city should own them, but they still have to spend time to go back in their records to find them, to send them over.
But cost-wise, having a consultant do that compared to us having an engineer, we were far smarter to have an engineer, if I remember correctly. And you've also gone out and found money to reimburse parts of your salary. Do you have any idea, like, what the equivalent of some of those reimbursed monies total in a year?
Um, yeah, $25,000.
$25,000.
Is what comes back from the MPO.
Okay.
Which, which another person would be eligible for that too. And we can up that, it's just, uh, going to the MPO and asking for it.
I mean, am I naive to, to think that you and Ryan and the amount reimbursed by the monies that you find as a steal compared to having consultants do all of the work that they were doing in years past?
Yeah, I mean, a GIS coordinator at $25 an hour is still cheaper than hiring a engineer at DGR for $80 to $150 an hour.
So Tammy, do you think that down the road, I don't know, three or four years, we're going to need a position, a full-fledged engineer, like yourself, for the city? Or is it going to be more of a person that can, is kind of a jack-of-all-trades? Doesn't necessarily have to be an engineer that we have to pay engineer wages for? Where do you see us going with that?
I kind of think we're ways away from needing an assistant city engineer. I mean... I, I don't know. I guess it really depends on development and how many projects we're going to do. Like, right now, we're doing a lot of projects. And, you know, when I started, it was kind of that, I'm okay with working really hard and working long hours to kind of get things caught up, but it seems like we're not getting caught up, we're falling behind on some things, and I don't know how to catch them up.
Well, I think, like, what the, what the mayor said, and Vicki, it, let's just step back from Ryan and say we were going to create a new position. Can we, would we find somebody that's kind of like that jack-of-all-trades kind of person?
Well, and I know in the budget, the economic developer is part of that. Um, you know, maybe somebody in that position can help clean up some of the things. There's a lot of drainage areas and everything else that some of the developers own, but they think the city owns, you know, things like that, that could be cleaned up. You know, they could work more one-on-one with the developers, and maybe that would take some questions off of me.
I have a question for Brian. Brian, what is your recommendation on this? I mean, you are the city administrator, you're the person that's, uh, assesses these positions and makes a determination on whether or not you want to expand certain positions or not. I, I, you know, when I came here, it seemed to me that we had a city administrator and an assistant city administrator, and now we have a, a city administrator. So where are you at?
We quite frankly need to staff, add staff in every department. You know, comparing us with comparable-sized cities, whether it's Vermillion, Mitchell, Spearfish, et cetera, the num, numbers that we usually take a look at, we are understaffed in each and every department. So each and every department, you know, is maxed. The more projects that we do, the more, the more the engineering department's going to get stressed. Uh, you know, in talking with, with Raleigh and Public Works, there's a number of things that, that we need to get rolling on, but we just don't have the staff time to do it, because it's the same thing. In the summertime, you know, we've got patching, we've got concrete, we've got sidewalks, we've got painting, we've got jetting, we've got hydrant flushing, we've got... So it's across the board, folks. We're, we are woefully understaffed across the board. I know where Tammy's coming from, all of that stuff. I would love to have a fully functional GIS system. That was the original intent when we started three or four or five years ago with trying to get an intern in. At some point in time, I want all of the GIS stuff, all of the mapping, all of the property records on a GIS system. So if there's a question on a parcel, we can click on a parcel, and there it is. Um... Like I said, we're understaffed across the board.
Well, Brian, if that, if, if that's the case, which I, you know, in my brief time, I know there's a lot going on. I'm, I'm amazed at how much is going on. At some point, you got to rectify that, you got to start somewhere.
Yep.
Maybe this is where we start. Maybe this is the position that we start with, and we, we look at this going forward. We can't add five people in one year.
No, no.
We know that, but we could add one person in one year, whether or not prior...
We've got proposed in here two new staff, uh, one in the finance and then one in sewer. Um, and we understand we can't just throw five employees on there, and then we need to take a look and see, you know, where we can, we, we need to prioritize staff additions, just like we do projects.
And that's where I guess I'm coming from. We're looking at this position, our, have we heard what other positions? You know, I think Christina mentioned another position.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, maybe Raleigh's mentioning.
Yep.
I would rather see, what, what are your priorities, and let's get started on doing something, but let's do it based on a plan going forward.
We did, I did ask department heads to give me a, you know, as part of the CIP stuff, at, at least kind of an idea of the next five years. Where are we at with staffing? Where do you think you're going to need staff in the next five years? I, I, I don't want, I don't want to play one department against the other...
No.
...when it comes to staffing.
So I have another question for you, down here a couple pages. Um, and I know this was, we, we were going to hire this this year, maybe we still do, but what do you think the economic development person is going to do? And what, what sort of, so taking some stuff off of some other people's plates, this person would probably come in handy with that, I would think.
You know, and I just haven't got around, I'm on about the third or fourth revision for the job description, I don't like where we're at with it. And I don't want to put out a job description that doesn't make much sense. As far as the development director's position goes, um, I think it will take eventually a lot of P and Z stuff off of the engineer's desk. It's not going to remove plat reviews, it's not going to remove, um, an engineering perspective on concept or development, or preliminary plans or anything like that. But as far as P and Z work, the development director's going to take all of that. Is there going to be a, a transition period, you'd ask? It's going to depend on what type of individual we hire, or what experience that individual has. If they're planning and zoning person, uh, Sioux Metro Growth can help out with the development stuff. I've done development deals for 30 years, I know TIF, that kind of stuff, it's easy. If we hire a developer, economic development director that doesn't have P and Z experience, that's not so tough to learn. Um, I would certainly sit down with that person and work through it. So that P and Z stuff will be off the engineer's plate. Um... You know, it all depends on the qualifications of the person. I, at this point in time, I don't know, you know, do they have GIS experience? I don't know. Is that the primary concern, that I'm a director, no?
I guess my question right now would be, yes, we feel like we've identified that there is a need there, but at this point, I don't know that we've identified all the other needs that we have and then prioritized those needs. And I guess I would ask that we do that, go through the budget, find out exactly what we feel we need, and at that point, make decisions based on new additional positions.
Correct. So we really have to get through the budget tonight, through all of the departments, and then after that, certainly go through these discussions.
Are you okay with that? I mean, I just feel like we're so focused on this one part of it, that we may be not seeing all the things that we might need in other areas down the road. And I feel like we need to go through the, the whole thing before we come back to the one thing.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to see, if we're short in the office, then I'd like to see what's not getting done, because I, I, and I'm sure there are things, but I need more of a justification than saying, you know, we need somebody to do accounts receivable, accounts payable. So if there def, if there's certainly a need there, then I guess I would like it detailed, and that's what you're saying, Mayor, what are we missing?
Yeah. So if we could go through the rest of the budget, and then if we can get to that this time, or next time, come back looking at priorities, and see if it fits into the budget, we can do that.
And I guess we would want that from, from the, all the departments, yeah.
I, I agree, yeah. I, I mean, I've heard maybe Raleigh needs somebody, I, you know, I totally understand that Tammy has need. I mean, I'm amazed at the amount of projects we've got going on, how you keep track of everything. Phew, that's, that's, and, you know, I think Brian hit the nail on the head. We're understaffed. Now, we can't add everybody at one time, so we need to really dig and prioritize, so we get the right people in the right sequence, and...
And I, I would just concur with what Barb said. I, I struggle with seeing an addition in, in finance, because we just added somebody, I believe it was in 2019, um, as a half-time position. If anything, I could see a compromise to change that from a half-time position to a full-time position, but we just hired and just got support, um, in 2019, and I think that's where my struggle is. I don't see the, the, the need. Um, and we're talking about not creating a position for the person. Well, if our part-time position isn't working anymore, then, then we need to change it to a full-time position. Now, to me, that would be the next step. It wouldn't just be, let's add more help where we've already recently added help, while we see somebody else burn the candle at both ends and...
Right.
...work 100 hours a week.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to put a damper on that, on the engineering department. I just feel like we need to come back to the, all of the positions, discuss them a little bit more, and have a plan on the additions that we need to make. Again, understanding that we can't do it all in one year, but, uh, so let's, let's move on, Brian, to the, let's not necessarily focus on personnel, let's look at, at the budgets.
Yep. Uh, police department. Relatively flat, looking at two vehicles.
I want one normal rotation, uh, we have one patrol car that's up on a normal rotation, and then we do have that secondary, that travel vehicle, or the, um, vehicle that's used by, that will be used by detective, um, that if possible, we would look to replace.
So one thing, the new equipment for the vehicle, the switchover for the vehicle, don't include, at least in the proposal here, um, a, basically a full-blown squad unit. Originally, when this was put together, it was just by a sedan for the detective. In talking with the chief, it's my opinion that if we're going to get a, a vehicle for the detective, we need a computer in it, and I would just as soon see that as a pursuit-rated vehicle. Maybe not with a light bar, but wigwags and the grill, because unfortunately, at some point in time, the detective's going to be out on patrol or, or going someplace, and a call's going to come in, and that detective is going to be, I don't want to say hot pursuit, but, you know. We don't want them in a substandard vehicle.
Yeah.
Because I know it's going to happen. So the equipment, new, new equipment for the vehicle and the switchover would, would need to increase a little bit...
Yep.
...for the computer and the, and the changeover.
So Jamie, we do have a normal rotation on how we wrote on...
Yeah, we do in our, like, 2017, the one that's off the floor, and I apologize, I don't have a mileage on it, but that's the, that's the vehicle that's off the rotation.
Okay. And it's based on mileage?
Of course, we do have some years where there's two patrol cars, that divide two in some year, but this year, next year, it's only a single car that are up for rotation.
Okay.
And we try to keep those vehicles, you know, somewhere, it'd be nice to keep them at 100,000, but 100 to 125 miles on them. Um, because actually, the wear and tear on them are, are much more significant than the miles show.
Thank you very much.
Well, it's, it's the idle time, you know, where, where the guys are running traffic, so the car's sitting there idling in the winter or the summer to keep cool or warm, and then they see a speeder, and then it's, it's go. So it's, we should put the hour meters on them, to keep track of hours instead of miles.
There you go.
Otherwise, um...
So as an example, this budget is up almost 15%. So I guess, fill in the gap for me, what am I missing? Where's it all coming from?
So the, the budget itself, outside, you take out wages, insurance, if you take that out, we're, our budget's actually down, but of course, because of pay raises and because of health insurance costs and all that, our budget's a lot higher. But if you take, so when I submitted the budget, the things we actually control, we actually came with a budget that was under last year's. But unfortunately, we, because of the, the wage and the insurance and all the other things that Christina calculates and puts in there, it's still higher than it was last year.
So I guess we'll probably get around to that discussion at the end, the benefits and the salary increase.
Uh, fire department, the, the biggest thing there is professional services, which is the normal day-to-day O and M for the department, and then the capital additional request is, uh, funding future equipment purchases, fire trucks, et cetera. Those are both calculated based upon the increase in the levy, so the same percentage increase that we see in the levy, and we've done that for, since the mid, mid 2000s.
And are we of the opinion that we want to continue with the ambulance contract? I presume so, but it's here.
Uh, building inspections.
See, but like, yeah.
Insurance, because we had an employee switch over to family coverage.
Yeah, I mean, like, this one's up 18%, so these numbers are pretty large. So I guess I just want to caution everybody that, you know, once they're in there, they don't go down. So I think we need to be cognizant of that.
Traffic, we need to finish the transportation plan. Traffic, we need to finish the transportation plan. Is the major expenditure there. Highways and streets. Other than wages, again, everything relatively flat. Looking at purchasing a new street sweeper for two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. Because we do need to get out and start sweeping streets a little more often. And the oldest one is... Okay. Yeah. For a big broom and a vacuum?
Yeah.
It's expensive. And that's... They're even more expensive than that, some of them. So... Yep. Paved streets, nothing major there. Snow removal is flat. Once again, I always caution the council at this point in the budget discussion, it all depends on how much snow we get. So, if we get a good year, that's going to be more than enough. If we get a bad year, we're not going to stop plowing snow. As you can look at 2019, you know, we had a hundred and twenty. Whereas 2020, we were only at forty. So... Storm drainage. We've got nine-hundred thousand for that Big Sioux Rec storm sewer project. The next line down, zero escaping, possible Holly Boulevard, a hundred thousand. Holly Boulevard, the boulevards are not in great shape. They are weed-infested, et cetera. So, a number of years ago, I can't remember how many, seven, eight, when we had Galbaby come in and reseed. We tilled them up, we brought some more black dirt in, we reseeded. They're still back in the same shape they are currently, or they were. Some areas, they're okay because the neighbors water. The vast majority of Holly, they don't. So, harebrained idea. Tammy and I have talked, it'd be nice to have some zero escaping examples that people could look at. So when we're talking about what zero escaping is, people can see what it is instead of us just talking about, oh, it's native plants and vegetations and so on and so forth. So the Offalaw concept is, we get ahold of three landscape companies. We give them each an area of Holly and say, show us what you can do. We want vegetation that will hold up to the rigors of Holly, whether it's the salt or the plowing or the non-watering. And then use the best, choose the best one as an example of how we can improve the looks of our main thoroughfares. So, that's what that hundred thousand is for.
So that proposals are the actual work to be done?
They would actually do the work.
Okay.
What, the thinking is, we're going to tell them, you get thirty grand, you've got, from here to here, whether it's a block or whatever, show us what you can do. Instead of trying to spec out X number of plants and so on and so forth, it'd just be nice to see what they can show us. And then that would give us some great examples of what zero escaping is and what it can do. And then eventually, you know, we added flower baskets on Holly to spruce things up. They look very nice, but if you look below the flower baskets, the vast majority of that's junk. And yes, the adjacent property owners are supposed to keep track of the boulevards. They don't. The vast majority don't. So it's an attempt to spruce up the community. And then, like I said, once we take a look at the different test plots, so to speak, we decide which type of zero escaping we want to pursue down Holly and/or Split Rock in the future. Sidewalks, crosswalks. We've increased the sidewalk repairs. Finished the bike plan, sidewalks set up in... Yeah, that next... South of Redwood, east of Split Rock. Where Chuck Parsons lives, that area. When that subdivision was done twenty years ago, unfortunately, the utility trenches weren't exactly compacted well. So as those have settled, sidewalks have settled, cracked, as well as a number of trees that are creating issues with the sidewalks. So we've got quite a bit of sidewalk repair in that area to get done.
I think Brian's identified a couple of them too. We have, kind of doing it on a half-year basis now, when people call and complain to me. I try to put it on a list and try to get it done every year, but if they don't call and complain, you know, that's a couple of somebody concerns. Trying to be a little more proactive, but that's why Tammy and Brian go out and check a lot of them.
So we need to, we've got a lot of sidewalks that are needed of repair.
How many communities take this burden on at the municipal level?
So, you know, a lot of cities will put it on the property owner.
Right.
They'll give them notice that they need to repair their sidewalk. If they don't, the city will come in and do it. You know, that's probably the vast majority of communities. Will put it on the property owner to repair those public sidewalks.
That's been every place I've lived besides here.
So...
One time, it doesn't cost share. Or one time, I know it doesn't cost share. You get a contractor to do sidewalk repairs, then the city will kick you up to the maximum dollars per foot to do the repairs.
That sounds very reasonable.
One thing I'd like to mention about those though, some of these people that have trees, trees are the issues. And when I hired my contractor to come in, he's taking roots out of the ground from underneath the sidewalks that are in this bed that could cause damage to the tree, which in turn, those roots have grown back. So I just replaced one on a coda this year that I did three years ago, and it's the tree pushing the sidewalk up again. So, now the gentleman's happy that we're picking after he's, because he's already left a little bit for him for pretty plus I'm fixing the sidewalk for him. So, I think we need to keep track of that. When we replace somebody's sidewalk due to tree roots, then it should be noted and put in a file. And if it becomes a problem again, then it should go down the homeowner a hundred percent. Or lose the tree.
Oh, Raleigh, you can't kill a tree, come on.
I'm with Brian on this.
If the city's going in and taking out a bunch of roots and making a tree vulnerable, though, I mean, do we have any exposure on that? I mean, we cut tree roots up?
I mean, they're only taking the stuff that's only six inches deep. Those roots are up underneath the sidewalk and pushing the sidewalk up. So it's not like we're digging too hard below the ground because they're only taking about six inches. They're making the sidewalk for it just so they can give the two-inch pad a grow. So, is it going to hurt the tree to make it fall over? No, I don't think it's creating liability. But it's creating liability and pushing the sidewalk every year. And it's not just sidewalks, the curb gutters are... Some of these trees are so close to the, to the curb gutter that it's actually shifting the curb gutters.
So is there a reason why we've never put it back on the homeowner? Is it like an ordinance or, I mean, is it not that much money? I mean, we're talking about saving money here, I'm just, if most communities do it, or is it not a good thing to do? I don't know.
Well, a couple of things. One, we've never, I shouldn't say never. We never really replace or put it on the homeowners in the past. Number one. Number two, and this is a philosophical opinion of mine, it's a city-owned sidewalk. We don't make them pay to replace the street. We don't make them pay to replace their neighbor's driveway. So why do we make homeowners pay to replace a public infrastructure?
What?
I mean, we make them, we make them put it in to begin with. And then we make them pay to replace it if it's in that shape, when it's ours. So, that's just a philosophy or a theory.
Five years ago, we didn't even have sidewalks. There were areas all in circle. None of those areas had sidewalks, so we didn't have to deal with them. And now that these areas, like Brian said, that are getting developed, and they've been here for twenty years, they're getting more and more problems. Trees getting bigger and stuff.
It's more and more intense for us.
I kind of look at it the same way as boulevard trees. When I first came, we expended a huge amount of man-hours going out and inventorying the trees, measuring the trees to make sure that they were ten and twelve feet over the sidewalk in the street. We would spend staff time to send out notices. We would then go back, re-inspect all of the trees to make sure if they were trimmed or not. Then we would hire a contractor to go out and trim those trees. And then we would send those property owners a bill for twenty-five or fifty bucks. So we would spend about three weeks of staff time measuring trees. It's just much easier to go out and trim the trees that we'd end up trimming anyway. And we don't bill the property owners for that. So, I mean, if the council wanted to get back into, or get into for the first time, notifying those property owners of sidewalks, we certainly can. I just find it much more efficient, much more effective if the city does it.
Makes sense, I'm just curious.
Usually, if there's a trip and fall on the sidewalk, we're getting involved too. And they'll fill out a liability form and we'll send it off to insurance because it is, it's in the public right of way. So we've gotten involved in those too. So we want to take care of a lot of those trip and fall ones before it happens as well.
We control nothing major transit, like we talked about when the transit contract was up. These are the numbers based upon the grant application that Rock submitted to the state. These numbers may change depending on how much the state's going to decide to fund us. Animal control's the same, no indication from Sioux Falls Humane Society that they're going to change anything. West Nile's the same. Again, depends on how much water we get, how much spraying we're going to have to do. This year's been very nice, relatively dry, haven't had to spray much. Again, a typical year with average rainfall, we're out every other week spraying from probably mid-May.
Usually, we start, yeah, mid-May or for sure the first of June, we go through August, September, beginning of May.
And that includes the larva side that we place in standing water. Recreation senior citizens, that's the payment we pay to the BFW for the senior citizens to meet there. Recreation Center, that's our summer rec program.
How's that going this year?
Good, went really well. We did a wrap-up with her, they are done for the year. She's going to get a report to us, we can get to you guys and just let you know how it went, but it went really well.
Numbers, I'm assuming, were about the same.
Yeah, she said they're about the same.
I mean, do you think that that's something that we need to continue? It's not a big budget item, but...
It's not a big budget item. You know, a lot of it, I shouldn't say a lot of it, it does act as a daycare in the community for the summer. Some of those kids, school-aged kids in particular, their parents work. During the school year, they have a place to go, during the summer, they don't. So, it does act as kind of a community daycare for some of those kids.
You know, she makes it very clear that it's not a daycare, though. The kids are welcome to come and go. It is a, it's a program and a place for the kids to go in the summer. I think it's a good program for them. She does a lot of field trips too. To allow, to get the kids to do some of those activities, like three movies, Thunder Road.
Is it every day, Christina?
Nine to nine-thirty, till three, or three-thirty, Monday through Friday.
And it's free, right?
Mm-hmm.
Over the field trip.
Yeah, the field trips, they have to sign up for and pay.
Where do they meet?
At the elementary school, Brennan Elementary.
The old line true.
Pardon?
The old line true. As in alone.
Swimming pool. Pool staff, we've got a meeting tomorrow with Tyson to go over the year. You know, unfortunately, as we all know, Sioux Falls bumped up their pool staff wages to attract additional people. We don't see that being decreased for next year. I think they're thirteen fifty an hour. So I would anticipate some pressure for us to bump ours up.
What are we at?
Ten ninety-five.
Did they raise it, still not get enough staff?
Correct. I think they still had two pools closed the entire summer.
Yep.
But we were fully staffed?
And they're, Sioux Falls is starting to close pools next, this week.
So did you build the increase in, to the wages, some increase?
Some, I didn't really think about too much of the Sioux Falls wages, but I did build some in there. I'll kind of know where they ended up this year here. Their final payroll will be early September, so I'll kind of know where they end up this year as well.
I did let that post that one out, so thank you. Did you do that, Christina?
Yeah.
I think it was a very good explanation of why we close when we do and do, I mean, it was really nice.
Yeah, I kind of looked at Sioux Falls' too and took a little bit off there, but I figured one of those questions might come up, so.
Yeah.
It's right in line where we've closed before. School usually would have started on the eighteenth. This year, they've kind of pushed it back a week too, but colleges still kind of get rolling.
Yeah, they're on the way, yeah.
How come the utilities were such a big jump? It looks like the four-year average was eighty-five hundred and...
We've added the blue building, and that has increased the utilities.
Because that playground, right? I mean, that's constantly...
The play structure in the slides.
A constant, okay.
So the year-to-date, forty-nine hundred, wouldn't that be kind of doubled?
Well, the year-to-date, you're only going through June in most of our, you know, we haven't even gotten our June utility bills in yet. So all of your summer usage is really the last half of the year.
And then chairs, we always have constant requests for more chairs.
And then I'm going to talk to Tyson tomorrow about, I kind of told him to, what we want to do with concessions. We get some questions on it on vending machines versus concessions. So I kind of left it on Tyson to talk to his management. And we'll talk about it tomorrow and discuss on whether we want to move back to concessions or not.
What's in those vending machines?
There's a pop machine, and then there's a candy machine. We've got, it's got various options in there.
So nothing healthy?
No.
Oh, very few things probably healthy.
And we got rid of the, we switched over to the vending machines a few years ago after we actually started analyzing profit and loss in the concession stand. And we were losing our choice.
Believe that.
Parks Department. No major in the operation stuff. Capital improvements. We've got two lists there as we normally do. Equipment, an RTV, a gator, painter forks, a ballfield drag, and a mower. And that equates to ninety-two thousand. And then list number two is a dog park down in Aspen Park, hammock slack line in Aspen Park. Upgrades to the fields, some upgrades to Vets Memorial that needs some maintenance on it. And then a canoe launch that, we've been talking with GF and P for a number of years.
And the Big Sioux paddlers?
So that'd be a canoe launch down in McCarty. And then we've got Tallgrass Playgrounds, playground and surfacing. So that would be replacing the playground equipment at Tallgrass and at the same time, putting in... So that would be replacing the playground equipment at Tallgrass and at the same time putting in, um...
Turf?
Turf. Port in place.
And we're gonna make that so it's a little bit more, um, for older kids, right? Is this one the really young ones?
Yep. This would, um, increase the, the age range. Cause I think right now it was designed for up to five, six, maybe seven-year-olds. So we'll be looking at, make it into an older, putting in some components for older kids.
What's the form place, what's that mean?
Well, it's like a, like a board and rubber.
So like this, what the school has?
That's like what the E has.
Yeah.
Okay, what the school has compared to like the turf and that's right.
Yeah, they're similar, what they do, it's just...
One looks like grass, the other one will just be like that, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, tar balls that move on a dry kind of one piece and see which one, like, the jar's been very long, but we're just...
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, forestry and nursery, ongoing tree trimming and removals of ash trees.
Can we think that's enough for removal? I don't know how many we can get done in a year.
Yeah, the neighborhood people this year, uh, the golf course, it's really close to fifty-fifty of people that are gonna be treating their own tree. So there's not, you know, I think the total number was originally seventy-ish. It's now down to thirty-five, forty, which is all over last year.
Do they have that pink or red thing around the trunk, is that you're tearing it down or what?
Nope, that was just, uh, identifiers so that everybody, they can get to handle it.
Oh, okay.
So, I really got the phone calls coming, which is good, that's your problem. Eventually, yes, I'll take down ones that are gonna stay and I'll, we'll watch what they're doing. September-ish, October or something like that.
And they know that they have to treat them more than once?
And the trimming and hiring mulching is the normal tree trimming that we do for Boulevard Trees. What area are we looking at doing next year?
About this year, this year, east, South Lake Rock.
Okay, so we're trying to do a third of the town each year. And then the mulching for the tree drop-off sites. Libraries, we haven't heard anything from the school about anything major at the library. Economic development, uh, full years of wages, it's a big change. Promoting the city is the flower baskets primarily. And then debt. How would you handle debt?
Debt, you can't control. One that we'll be adding next year is the Rushmore Phase One. And we are not, uh, we're removing a small one next year and that's about the need drainage, but other than that... Uh, and then at the bottom there is that operating transfer out, transferring to the golf course for their, um... May, mostly their wall. And then some projects that we'll have to fund until we get the project started and bonded.
Third penny sales tax, those are the dues that we pay to Sioux Metro, CCOG, Municipal League of Chamber. The biggest one there is the interest for the Branded Development Foundation on improvements up in the Rollbang Industrial Park.
What's the one for land?
Uh, we're looking at buying two parcels for Core Phase Two. Might get them done this year, but, um, could roll in next year too.
That's what that drainage?
But school, be looking at school and then, uh...
Larry and Aram's?
Larry and Aram's property.
South of, uh, Lions Billy.
South of the school.
South of the school, south of BE. Street Maintenance Fund, that is funded out of our street maintenance fee that we talked about bumping up. We fund slurry seal, patching, painting, signs, et cetera. The big one there is the overlay project for Fifth and Sixth slated for next year. As well as McCarty Bridge repairs. And then we would continue, um, with the overlay at least on Seventh. Now included in those Fifth, Sixth, Sioux is also the side streets, correct? Like Elman, Fur, et cetera. How would you handle all the debt service, the bid?
Uh, bid is just debt. Um, the, street funding is, um, we receive a portion from the state for the STP for streets. And that would be transferring out to, um, Rushmore Phase One and Two for those projects. Uh, the next one is rainwater, it'd be our new rainwater fund. We anticipate about four hundred thousand in revenue in there, so we would have, um, just some projects that we would get started in that fund. Nothing really, uh, concrete yet, but on what those projects will be. Uh, the next page, the tip two is debt. The other two are done and at the bottom would be Ironwood. Hope to construct Ironwood next year. And that is the dollar amount that we're looking at for the construction project. Uh, the next page on Page Thirty-four at the top would be Redwood Chestnut. That's just continuing the design work on the Redwood and Chestnut. Core Phase Two would be construction of Core Phase Two at the four-point-two. Uh, Rushmore Phase One would be finishing up, so it'd be warranty work. And then we would start design wer- work on Rushmore Phase Two.
And wha- what's that, Tam, uh, Christine, Rushmore?
Rushmore is the one we're doing right now.
Right, but what's phase?
That's Phase One. Phase Two is the...
Moving west. Going west.
Moving west, I don't remember which one.
I wish Cedar Circle and maybe Kirkwood area. We haven't really narrowed it down yet. There have been a few other issues kinda popping up on there, so we'll figure that out this fall.
So would that be construction twenty-twenty-three then?
Yes, yep.
Yep.
At the bottom, we just have a Water Conservation Committee that they meet every once in a while.
Water Department, source of supply, we've got a well number six building to construct over well number six. Rehabbing it this year. If you're down in Aspen Park, uh, wellhouse number six is a little white, kinda outhousey-looking shed. That we would like to upgrade and make it a little more stormproof. Um, so it'd be more consistent with the, the wellhouses that we have built recently. We'd be looking at water treatment plant construction. Starting next year. Um, distribution, we've got some money in there for modeling the system, so we stay up to, up to speed on that, make sure it's, it's working properly. Phase Three of the meter replacement program.
How many phases we got?
Six, seven?
Seven.
Four left.
The, well, I'm gonna say this phase will get a lot of the older ones we're having problems with, but there are some areas out in Country Club we do too. But this will get a, a lot of it caught up, a lot of the older ones for sure.
Uh, improvements other than buildings, PRVs, Tammy?
Um, these are pressure-reducing valves. There is a section on top, mostly the east side, that was that new water tower with the left board.
Then they're going to need these installed because their pressure will be over eighty PSI. So, it's a need before we can turn the water tower on.
Are we having too much pressure?
Yes, yep.
Houses will that affect?
Uh, three hundred-ish, yeah, quite a few.
How do they get it?
Pretty much everything east of the golf course. How do they install them?
Like they have to go to each house?
Yep. Yeah.
Raleigh's guys have to go to each house and do it, or you just give it to us and we have to do it?
No.
Kinda hired up.
We have our license plumber to go in and do it.
Oh, okay. Yeah. This is way over my head, people. Like I'm sitting in one of those houses, way over my head.
Me too, me too. Just don't blow me up at night.
We can get Brian to come over and do it.
I'll do it. No guarantees of works.
What?
I say without, gonna take the skin off or...
I, I don't, I wouldn't worry about the skin getting ripped off in the shower, I'd be more worried about the pipes glitching in the basement.
Yeah, well, hot water heaters and stuff. Some of those pressures will be in that hundred to a hundred and twenty and you're not supposed to go over eighty, so.
And then we anticipate the water tower will, will get done next year, so that's, uh, next year's costs. Uh, administration, um, purchase of, of pickup and computers. We do about one pickup a year between sewer, water and streets to rotate those out on a regular basis. And then transferring out the engineer and the bonds. We divvy up the engineer costs, a third to general fund, a third to sewer, a third to water. And then the bonds would be the share of the water, um, construction costs for Core Phase One.
Core Rushmore?
Core Rushmore debt service. Street lighting. Nothing too crazy there. We are including costs for Core Phase Two in the budget as we change some of those streetlights out. Sewer fund, looking at adding an employee in the sewer fund.
Four?
Unfortunately, I have five people, four people in my crew that could retire within the next five years. But I'd like to start now instead of trying to hire five in three years, four years.
And then we also have, you know, Raleigh and I have talked quite a bit for a number of years. We need to get out and, and start jetting sewers on a more regular basis and we just, between street repairs and cracked ceiling and... We just don't have the bodies to get out and, and do it. But that's an essential, um, work to be done for Public Works. It's, it's part of our, um, insurance as well. If there is a sewer backup and we have jetted that sewer, uh, in the last three to five years, usually that indicates that we're performing appropriate maintenance on that sewer. So, that claim is usually denied. If we don't get out there and jet those sewers and it's been more than three to five years, our insurance company will pay that, that cost. So, we need to, we need to bump up our sewer maintenance and, and included in that is, as we add storm sewers throughout the city, which we've never had before. We... We need to do some additional maintenance on our storm sewer systems as well. Cleaning catch basins, making sure those pipes are good. You know, we've got a couple of great examples. Uh, we cleaned out that, uh, concrete channel, uh, on Aspen, west of Chestnut last year. And it's filled up again and cattails are starting to grow. Well, we need to get out there and clean that on a regular basis. Same thing with, uh, uh, the drainage way north of Redwood, running to Split Rock Creek. We need to get in there every year and, and kill the weeds and clean it, et cetera. And then we've got drainage ways primarily out in the bluffs that we're trying to work with the con- or the developer to get them cleaned up and shaped up. So then we can maintain them much easier, but we've got trees growing in them that we need to get mowed, trimmed. If those waterways, drainage ways aren't working correctly and it backs up and causes damage to people's property, we're liable for that. So, trees and bushes and drainage ways are not good.
So we had a tour of that several years ago and we're still not getting compliance on that issue?
We've...
And what can we do?
Yeah, we, we've got some work to do with the con- with the developer. Some of those are easements, some of them we own. The, the developer didn't really, um, build them the way they should've been built. Didn't take the time and effort to actually do it. And now you've got some folks who have kinda claimed them as their yard. So it's, it's dealing with those property owners as well. Some of, some of the folks like those trees in the waterways. We don't. Uh, we should just let the beavers go and the, the trees would've been cleaned out. So as, like I said, as we get more su- uh, storm sewer infrastructure, um, we're gonna have a lot more work in storm sewer that we just haven't had before. You know, for instance, the, the detention facility at the south end of Rushmore. You know, we go from, from having nothing there, I shouldn't say that, but we had a forty-eight inch pipe, to having, um, you know, a BMP down at the end of Rushmore. So, that's gonna require some maintenance as well.
On the, the sewer jetting, if it's a liability issue, if we don't do it every three to five years, what percentage of our town are we exposed on right now that hasn't been done in three to five years?
I've got it set up right now, but we'll get through it in five years. And just to give you an idea of everything from Casey's down to Robert Bennett's schools, over thirty thousand feet of sewers.
So we are on top of it?
We're almost done with the twenty-twenty-one already this year and I actually, we'll look at hiring out some of the twenty-twenty-two for next year. Some of the funds I have left.
Uh, collection and disposal, we need to design that, that sewer line to Sioux Falls. So that would take place next year. Tammy had a meeting with Sioux Falls... Friday? They are, it's not included in, in the budget yet. They are looking at moving their headworks building. The headworks is where all the pipes come into the plant. That's where our force main goes into their current plant. They're looking at moving that over the next three years to a different location. So, uh... We have some costs involved with that relocation. So, we just talked today, hopefully we can talk Sioux Falls into maybe letting us make payments over the next three years to pay for our share of the, of the costs. Instead of just sending us a bill when it's all said and done.
I'm not sure.
Uh, just that portion there, we're estimating about six hundred and sixty thousand.
That would, we would owe?
Yeah. So that would be for our new line to go into the headworks building. They would pay for existing line to go to the headworks building. But they'll replace our twelve-inch on their property if they're dying. But then they're obviously asking for us to spend six hundred and sixty for the one.
And that's the new one we're hoping to use with the...
Yes, that's, that's the new force main to Sioux Falls. Now, we would, when we build a new force main, we would have to pay the six hundred and sixty thousand anyway.
Yeah.
But since they are relocating the building now, they would like to get the work done while they're under construction. Which makes perfect sense of them moving the building, getting work done and then a year or two later, we tear it back up and bring our line in.
Yeah. So, uh, is it like close to where it is now?
Yeah, I mean, it's just on the other side of their facility.
It goes from the s- kinda the center of their facility to the northwest corner. So, that's, that's just something that came up today, so.
So, yeah, and I'll bring in an amendment to our preliminary contract with HDR for that design. So that they can do the design work and get it into their set of plans right away. I think they need that by the fall, they wanna bid it out next spring. So we're kinda on a crunch, I'm getting it in there.
Uh, utilities, Sioux Falls Treatment, that's what we pay Sioux Falls. And that includes the anticipated, or the, the price increase on treatment costs. The SDC charges is, the, the SDC charge that we pay to Sioux Falls, the system development charge for each new home that's connected based on meter size. We base that on forty homes, I mean, this year we're at fifty-seven, so.
We're gonna, our budget's probably blowing this year.
Yeah. Uh, the pool lift, as we've talked...
Do we always take that, or does, uh, the developer doesn't?
We're phasing that over to the developer, but it's...
Oh, that's right, that's what we're phasing over.
It still comes through us. It still comes through us.
Okay.
So, eventually when the developer contractors are, are paying a hundred percent, it would be, we'll show a revenue to offset the expenditure.
Oh, nice.
The pool lift station, we've talked about that with the, with the renovations to the treatment plant and the, the pool. We need to upsize the pool lift. And, and, yeah, it, Twin Rivers Crossing as well flows into there. Lift station rehab is just our normal upgrading or updating of, of lift stations. And then the east side or west side main for a million bucks, which is probably short.
Not short, I haven't seen it yet.
We've got a cost estimate on the west side. And the east side, so, yeah, that million isn't gonna touch it.
Oh, we, we're not getting any grant?
Yeah.
Yep, we anticipate using our, uh, ARP funds, the one point eight million in ARP to pay for, whichever one comes in first. At this point in time, it's probably gonna be the west side sewer. We hear some rumblings out there that the state may have some additional funds available. So we're putting a list together of sewer and water projects that we can submit to them. No, no details, no official confirmation from the state that there's even money available.
We talked to the county?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're working on that too.
Golf course.
Uh, looking at irrigation audit, audit. For that, he's just, uh, nothing's been really done to the irrigation system since they redone it ninety-five. So he's looking at having somebody come in and see if he's getting good coverage, um, what there's needed for repairs, or if there's leaks and, um, some valves. So, he said unless there's a major issue, staff can fix the majority of, of those. And then the other one would be, the major would be, uh, equipment. Um, we came up with a pretty good equipment plan for. Golf course maintenance, um, try to get them on a schedule where they're only buying one or two pieces of equipment a year versus doing our package bundle. So this will get them on the right track in the future.
Uh, golf course pro shop, we've got the GPS system in there, which.
Streets are here, uh, where are you still that order, so. And then the crew, there are like two crews that travel the country that have installed, so they're bad luck, since everyone's just getting their system now. Hopefully, hopefully this year we'll get them in there.
Uh, lounge and community room. Nothing too, too crazy there. Air conditioning unit still on track for.
Uh, I think, I think you guys talked about last week, we can stick at the end of September, first weekend afterward. So just some time for it to cool.
Yep. Clubhouse building expenses, we've got that, uh, retaining wall included in there. As part of that retaining wall project would be the roadway going down to the maintenance building as well. And then patio, the patio on the north side, um, needs to be replaced.
That would be furniture mostly, yeah. The dollar amount in there, it wants to be furniture.
Yeah.
The patio will get replaced and the retaining wall.
Cause it's settled, eh, a good inch, inch and a half.
Yeah, I would say so. The pond, the pond will go away, so I don't need to somewhere.
Yep.
Debt, good news, the building will be paid off. So that comes off there.
And then it's just, uh, debt service on the leases for the equipment.
So then, um, so if the debt service comes off, have we allocated that money then someplace else? Cause I mean, I don't think.
Typically that was coming out of the general fund as a transfer over.
I think going forward, that'll help us be able to be more flexible on, not big projects, but smaller projects that we wanna do this year. Cause we're getting all the big ones, my opinion after next year, all the big ones will be out of the way.
You were gonna try and get some money to do the sand traps, did that ever happen?
Uh, we're working on it.
Working on it?
Making progress, but.
Good.
Hopefully, I don't think it'll be next meeting, but hopefully September I'll have an update on FEMA and where we're at, and hopefully can move forward with something.
And we're not planning any transfers into the golf course next year.
Uh, just for the wall and debt, really, is what the transfer will cover.
The wall does not include the parking lot though.
No.
Parking lot is getting to be a pretty poor shape with that, I thought.
The parking lot is what, like, three to four hundred, or is it more to redo it?
Probably more than that.
Anything helps that to that subject.
And refresh my mem, the building that's going up there now, what?
That's an altitude relief valve building for the water tower project.
Okay.
So, read in and discuss salary and wages now, or?
Yeah, Christine's got some information that you requested at the last meeting.
Uh, the first one is asked, uh, budgeted wages versus insurance. So the top one would have been twenty twenty-one, what was budgeted. And then that second line would be the revised budget with the wage changes in March. So you would have your committees, your part-time, your full-time, and then your total wages. The twenty twenty-one revised budgeted wages would be the three million, just a little over three million. And then the insurance budgeted number is at seven seventy-one, and then the percentage of full-time versus insurance would be about thirty-one percent. And then that bottom one would be twenty twenty-two wages, there's a few more columns. So it's a little easier to compare. Um, but you have your total before the, your added staff at three point one seven, and then your added staff and your total wages. And then kind of broke it down between current insurance and then insurance with the new employees and any, and any changes that we anticipate for next year. To bring to your total insurance, and then your percentage.
These two new employees, that's assuming that the economic development person would have been hired, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then on top of that, that would have been the finance of the sewer one?
Yep.
Okay.
Did we ever get the final number? We were looking at our wages versus benefits, not wages versus insurance like it's on this sheet. But we were talking about getting that finalized with what our, our number is, I think we were pushing like forty percent with other benefits, time off, vacation. Life, retirement, yep. Did we ever get that? I think we were, we're still waiting on the sick time to be factored in there.
Yeah, we gave you the number, but you wanted something with sick leave and vacation that everybody, according to different rate.
To wages, that invisible paycheck. But I, I don't.
This is a fair reflection to just compare wages to insurance, but I mean, that's. Uh, did we figure out what it would, what it would cost if we eliminate our new hires having to pay that buy down for three years?
Yeah, so that second one would be the insurance. The first page would be your six percent increase with two new additional employees with their current policy. So the total insurance line is around nine forty-two. That second page would be eliminating that buy down, where everybody would pay that five percent, and increases about fifty thousand. Now, it's, it's an estimate because I don't know what those new employees are going to take for coverage. So, I'm assuming that they'll take family.
I'm, I'm totally in favor of finding fifty thousand in our budget to be able to do that for our new hires. I don't know where everybody else stands.
And previously, we have not done, uh.
Previously, they have to wait for, until their fourth year before they get the same benefit that their colleague does.
That's a long time, it seems a bit unusual. I mean, I, I'm used to some timeframe, but maybe not quite that.
I guess I'd like to go back to our position of, and I don't know what the number is, but we have a number for health insurance, and then we make, and then we have the staff just do what they need to do to make it work. I'm not in favor of increasing our wages by the CPI. I'm thinking that our real estate goes up by, there's a, a limit on what our real estate can go up, our real estate growth, and maybe we tie it somehow to that. Cause once these get in the budget, they ne, they never come back out. And if we're gonna be tight on development, like our roads and stuff, I, I don't know that we can tire, tie the next council that way.
So we have taken CPIU since twenty fourteen. Um, prior to that, we've been doing three percent. I mean, if you would average it out, and we would, would have done three percent over the, those years, I think it would have been at like twenty-four percent. But taking what we have taken since twenty fourteen and taking the five point four percent next year, I think it'll really get like nineteen point eight percent. So, CPIU is what we, what we've used for seven-ish years. If you wanted that to change, then.
Well, I think we can, I think we can, um, maybe we put a minimum and a maximum on it, something like that. Cause this.
The five point four percent you're talking about is in addition to their annual merit raise that they'd get anyways.
The five point four percent is your January first raise.
The COLA.
So it'd be your COLA. That's what the state uses, so that's what's going, the state uses the August one, we use the June one because we're preparing budget. The state uses the August one, and that's what part-time wages will increase by. We anticipate that being around the five percent.
Jack was asking at the last work session about what our savings would be if we implemented, implemented a, um, spousal requirement where the spouse needed to take the insurance that they had at their job. Did we look into that?
Yep, I did. Um, I sent out a little survey to the employees as to who's got what type of coverage, and if their spouses have coverage elsewhere. And what that cost would be. I got it in a spreadsheet, what they do with it. And not all, not all spouses, pardon, not all spouses have coverage, it's, it's probably less than fifty percent.
That have them available?
Yep.
Or have.
They have it available to them.
Coverage available elsewhere.
So, and I haven't, I haven't calculated what that cost savings would be, but I will do that. And the cost to the employees to purchase that coverage ranged anywhere from, I think, a low of a hundred and twenty, five hundred and thirty bucks up to six hundred bucks a month.
For individual?
Correct.
So that'd be the best thing, if you're gonna, I mean, are you gonna set parameters? If the spouses are paying more or a certain amount, are you gonna kick them off? I mean, just thoughts?
Boy, that, that just seems extremely high for a single coverage.
Sometimes they offer single coverage, it's on a group plan, but they pay the full amount.
Correct.
You know, getting back to the, uh, the wages, what is it, five point eight?
Five point four.
Five point four this particular year. And like it was pointed out, and I'm, I'm gonna say it, back in twenty fourteen, when the inflation rate was low, the, the city changed it. Uh, because it was favorable for the city. And now we've got this bump, part of it is, uh, probably due to the COVID-related issues that have impacted everybody. And suddenly it's not favorable for the city, so now the desire is to change things. I guess I would, I, I would support going for, on this particular budget with five point four, staying with that CPI. And then maybe coming up with a plan for the future of saying minimum, maximum, because, uh, they do start losing, losing distance. And then we're, we play like what we did with the police department, we're playing catch-up. Because the other communities that are competing against us for these, uh, these people.
Well, I would be in favor of that, Dave, except that our property tax is capped at three percent. And so, y, you know, we're just stuck that way, we have no flexibility there. So I, I struggle with trying to reconcile that because we are capped.
Well, we're capped on property taxes, but, uh, and I've always been somewhat optimistic on the, on the sales tax. Sioux Falls is capped on the, on their property tax also, they're, they're growing, uh, they get more. We, how many houses do we have this year so far?
Fifty-seven so far.
Fifty-seven, and I think the last time we got the report, it was forty-five, now it's fifty-seven. Uh, that's, that's gonna add, the sales taxes were. Where our future really lies. And with the, I, call me an optimist, but with, with the development out by the interstate, the talk of the development on the west side, I think are, and plus just the online buying that's been going on. I think our, our sales taxes are, are gonna be looking better, uh, than, than what they have. I think our per capita for that is not capped, and that's where we're gonna benefit. So, I guess for this year, I'm, I'm thinking, in fairness, we stay with the CPI that we went with back in twenty fourteen. And then we can have a discussion, uh, on what we're gonna do in the future. Are we gonna stick with the CPI, are we gonna, uh, put a minimum, maximum on there? And, uh, I guess that's just my thoughts on it.
I would be more supportive of a compromise on the CPI. Um, this year we gave everybody raises, and we gave everybody a new pay scale that makes every raise a bigger raise. So, on the heels of a year where we're supposed to be very lean on our budget, I struggle with throwing that much more in that direction. I struggle with throwing that much more in that direction, but I would be, I would be open to a compromise.
So correct me if I'm wrong, this five point four would be above what already had been done?
Mm-hmm.
Or, so
And above their step increases that have given their
And there was something given in January?
March.
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 Yep.
Based on?
Um, new pay scale. New pay scale, and then at the police department, it showed in their wage studies in previous years that they were underpaid, so they got a, like a significant one. Everyone, I think, at least got a sixty cent raise, which it figured out like twelve, thirteen hundred dollars a year or so.
Sure.
And some got more than that.
So, yeah, some may have got more than that too, but
Okay.
But, and then that was in addition to their COLA, which wasn't that much this year, and, um, their merit.
Another, another compromise might be that we do the COLA, do, I don't know, if we do three percent, and that goes into their built-in, their salary, and the rest of it is a bonus, because my concern is that once this gets into the salary base, it's just a compounding, it's like a snowball running downhill, it just builds up a lot of momentum. So perhaps we could do some as a bonus, so it doesn't go into the pay scale for next year, it's just kind of an outside thing. I don't know if that's
I think it's a good idea.
I don't know if
I'm afraid this snowball is gonna continue with the pressure on wages in general, and we're gonna see this going forward in every, every walk, so I I don't know, I don't, I, it's not an easy solution. So what would their total compensation increase be for the year? Do we have any idea?
Well, I guess it's one of these charts.
So you, there was a merit, or what did you call the increase in March? That was a
New pay scale.
New pay scale.
That was a new pay scale.
That was just a new pay scale that everyone went up, and then they call it a merit rate, you guys go like, is it a merit raise, like depending on every year?
Yep, on their, on anniversary date, as long as they get an acceptable performance review, you know, it'll up a step. So, twenty twenty-one, the revised budgeted wages, uh, three million, eighteen thousand.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-two budgeted wages with two full-time staff is three point one seven.
Yeah, I see that.
Oh, that's before added staff.
So really, we're looking at, with the added staff, with this proposal, the three point two eight, two eight two?
Yep.
Okay.
So that's two hundred and seventy thousand in wages, and then the health insurance.
Sure. That's a hundred and eleven, right?
Okay, so what do we, uh, what do we have to do here? I mean, are we coming back to make a final decision, or what?
Yep, I would anticipate two more budget meetings.
Are you kidding?
Yep, we've got five, we've got five Mondays in August.
I thought we were gonna do it faster this time, Brian.
Well, we started sooner. Um, what I would anticipate is, if you have any ideas or thoughts or something you wanna see, let us know. The next budget meeting would be, uh, the twenty, no, I don't have a calendar.
What is today, the ninth, the sixth, twenty-third?
Yeah, the twenty-third, and then the final one to go over, the final, final budget would be on the thirtieth. And that one would be what we would present for consideration at the first meeting in September.
Well, I mean, I, I think everybody appears got different opinions, so, I mean, how, how are we
We're gonna have to do motions on CPI, we'll have to do motions on, you mentioned going forward, just going at forty-five dollars per meeting, we'll need a motion on that.
Doing the discussion, or, I mean, how are we going to reconcile this discussion, I guess, is my question.
Well, uh, you know, we'll, we'll give you, you wanted some more information, you wanted total benefits, um, the cost savings, which I'll get, um, maybe look at a three percent base and a two point four percent bonus, something like that.
I think that's the key, Brian, right there, I think that's what you're saying, we're gonna at least have to see what a three percent base would be.
So we'll, we'll start taking a look at some of that stuff, and I know Christina's got some notes here too. So we can present that at the next budget work session, uh, two weeks from today. And then, the council will need to make that decision by a formal motion in order to change whatever you wanna change it to.
Well, I think it's interesting to see what the difference is between the proposed and three percent.
Correct, cause
Might be fairly insignificant.
Yeah, we
We'll see.
You know, there's, there's some differing opinions on the council, so we as staff would have a tough time figuring out what you wanna do.
Sure. I think the other thing we gotta figure out is the additions, you know
Yep.
Have, what we're going to approve for, you know, is the engineering issue, is this, you know, the finance. At this point, has there been anything additional approved?
No.
No.
Nope, nothing's approved until the, the budget's done.
Well, I didn't think so, but I didn't know if something had happened
Nope.
Earlier this year that I wasn't aware of.
Other than economic development, that's the only one that's just kinda being delayed, but that was approved.
Yep, so I, I think as far as the, the potential jobs for new employees or new hires for twenty twenty-two, we could, I don't wanna say we'll have a full-blown job description.
No, but if you could have an idea, these are the three or four, whatever.
A concept.
So, and I don't mean this, is the economic development director, is that a full-time
Yep.
Job?
Yep.
So.
It would be, right now, that's what Dennis Olson's doing, right?
Yeah, right, right now, Dennis Olson does economic development for us, as well as working with the Development Foundation, it's kind of their staff person. Planning and zoning duties are handled by Tammy.
So some of Tammy's
Yes, it's, it's not an economic development position, it's a development director position, that will do both planning and zoning and economic development, industrial development, so.
I guess where I'm going with this, is this a person that could help Tammy also in take and alleviate some of her?
The development director?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, in, in my mind, my way of thinking, all of the planning and zoning stuff except for plat reviews would be off of Tammy's desk. All of the day-to-day operations of the department, all of the, uh, zoning ordinances
Sure.
Would be taken over by the development director.
So they would be busy, I mean, that'll be sort of part-time, so we would have busy enough work for someone for year-round, yeah.
Tammy, what, like, percent do you think they would take off of your plate, if you don't mind sharing?
I mean, I think that varies a lot, you know, sometimes, I, I think lately P and Z has been talking about a lot of discussions on, you know, should we allow this, should we not allow that, should we do this? I mean, a lot of that conversation kinda comes out of site plan review and development review. I will say I don't think I do that part of my job justice, because I don't have that much time to spend on it, and having somebody else in that role would benefit planning and zoning a lot. Paul and Melissa, I mean, there's not much management there, they kinda know their system, and they have a good system down, so.
Still just trying to get a better idea of what that takes off of you, is it just not much, or is it, you know, hey, they're gonna be a great help to me?
Um, I don't know, ten, fifteen percent? I mean, it definitely would take some things off of my desk.
I guess for, uh, for all of those possible additional staff, I think what we need to see is, like, okay, what is this person, like, the mayor said, so for example, Raleigh's person, that means that sewers are gonna get jetted these many more times, I need a little bit, I'm a little more anal, so I need a little bit more concrete informa- information than just, we need another person.
Because we need to do the jetting more often, so I, I would like some concrete numbers, I guess.
I like what you're saying, I mean, if, if this is something that could affect our insurance, and we aren't doing it, we need to get it done. What you talk about jetting, the, I don't even know what that means, but, uh, sounds like
I don't wanna do it.
Doesn't sound like fun, but, uh, yeah, I think I'm busy next week, but Okay.
But then on the flip side, we also said we're gonna be contracting more of that work out with somebody else, so then it becomes a challenge to figure out which
Yeah, well, yeah, I understand that too, but with Raleigh, the one thing that got me thinking too, we know all those guys, you kinda do a little bit of everything. So I see where Raleigh's coming from, if we do know there's guys are gonna be age-appropriate to be retired out, it's not like you can just train somebody a short amount of time. And you have to find the right person, right? Like you said, some guys don't, oh, I only wanna do streets, or I only wanna, you know, like, they don't wanna do everything that Raleigh and his crew have to do, so I see that point too, where I like being more proactive, cause it probably would take a good, don't you think, a good year? To really get somebody trained in everything that you do, like, really mastering it? I just feel like a lot. So it's still, I mean, yeah.
They don't do everything all the time, they may only do something once a year. So the, the honest job training only happens when we happen to do that job, while we're only doing that job for one day, they don't get a whole lot of training.
Yeah.
So it's, it's difficult to train them the way we need them to train, that's why it'd be nice to have them when they're fresh out of college or something, and then I can get them trained for a couple of years, and then that guy can maybe help train the next guy.
Well, let's come back, uh, in two weeks, and kinda go with some of those things, Brian, if you can have. Okay. Meeting adjourned, meeting adjourned.
Second.
Yeah, looked like I could just do that.